Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting for December 1st, 2008 to order. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you could please turn that off. Our rule is if it goes off during the meeting and we hear it, it's donuts for everyone. So that could get pretty expensive. The other thing is if you do wish to speak to any item that is on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're over to your left, my right, at the media table. If you'd fill that out with your name and also the agenda number, that way as we work our way down the agenda, we'll make sure that we don't miss you. So if you could please fill that out and then turn it in. Heidi, can you wave at everybody real quick? Just turn it into Heidi and she'll make sure that it gets up. First thing is we do need to do a roll call and determination of quorum. Heidi, if you would, please.
Quaker, Olson, Kroger, Hadcock, LaCroy, Martenson, Weyfenbach, Okrepke, Chapman.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Thank you, Heidi. Next thing, as always, on the agenda is the invocation. If you would please rise, Pastor Greg Robinson from Bethel Assembly of God will be giving our invocation. And if you would please remain standing, we'll go straight to the pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
Father, tonight, we pause before you, God, as we should, Lord, and we just give you thanks, God, for this night. We thank you for this time that we've gathered together to seek counsel, Lord. And Father, tonight, God, we seek your counsel, your wisdom in all the decisions that will be made, all the discussion that will be brought. And Father, we want your direction, God. So I pray tonight, Lord, that your Holy Spirit would guide us, direct us, each one in this room, Father, that everything that is done, everything that is fought and happens, God, would give you glory. Father, tonight, we just turn this evening over to you, God, and we seek your direction. Rest in this place, be in this place, and we give you praise. And Father, we do all this in the great name of Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The citizens of the public stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, who delivered to the people justice. Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be placed on the agenda? If so, please turn on your light.
Any additions?
Any additions to the agenda? Please turn on your light. Let's go to older woman, Deb Hadcock.
Actually, I'm going to add an item for Erin. It's a thank you toward Ward 5 constituents.
Okay, I think we'll do that right after you've sworn in, you have the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Erin and I had that opportunity. Let's see here.
One more.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Sorry.
That's right.
Also downtown for the holidays, I need to do announcement on that, if we could.
So how about an 81A?
Thank you, Mayor.
And that's downtown. Are you going to be talking about the lights down at Helly Park?
Um, sure.
Okay. If not, I was going to add that. Any additional items? Please turn on your light. Any additional items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to adopt the agenda as published with the addition of 81A, please.
It's a move.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we need to approve the minutes from the November 17, 2008, with a correction on the agenda to item 117 to reflect the correct project number for the Street Rehab Project, Harney Drive, Harney Place, and Raymond Drive, project number ST-08-1771.
It's a move.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as stated. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We now go to awards and recognitions, and we do have one recognition. And Jackie, I know you're somewhere. If you could come up and join me. And also, Mr. Preston, and I think Deb, you want to come down also? We had you.
You want to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Nice.
You know, it's always an honor to recognize long-term employees. And unfortunately, we're losing one tonight because she's going to retire. Jackie has been around as long as I can remember. She has kept this council and the staff straight, which was, I'm going to tell you, which is tough at times. And all I can say, and I know that I told Jackie this a little bit earlier at her going away party this noon, is the fact that she will be tremendously missed. She was a great asset for our community. She really was the rock in her position. I mean, if you needed to know where anything was from a meeting going back 10, 15 years ago, you went and asked Jackie. And so, you know, Jackie, we're going to miss you. With that, I'm going to have Mr. Preston, our city finance officer, say just a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie has been with the city for 28 years. She's worked in a number of different departments, including public work. She works for streets and water reclamation and finance office. Some of them she worked at the same time. So she's a very busy gal. The last four years, she's been administrative coordinator for the finance, which means she's the council's secretary. And she takes care, or did take care, of a lot of different tasks. And we always accounted on her. And she is going to be missed. And Jackie, best luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
Deb, do you want to say a few words?
I just appreciate the last three and a half years that I've been on the council. She has been an asset to our community, an asset to working here as a city council person. Because if I ever needed help, Jackie has always been there. And we have appreciated her as a council a whole lot. She's going to be very much missed and pretty sad that she's leaving. But God bless to her and good luck, Jackie.
It's harder than I thought. When I came to work for the city, I only intended to be here three years. This is the longest three years I've been anywhere. It's been a challenge. I've enjoyed it. But I don't think that I'm through serving the public. This is my home, and I will continue to serve it. And one day, my desire is to sit back here and serve the community. So I intend to work towards that. Thank you. I've enjoyed my stay here.
Thank you. Mr. Castello, would you like to put your hand up? Mr. Castello, would you like to put your hand up? Mr. Castello, would you like to put your hand up? Mr. Castello, would you come up and join us, please? We're very pleased to be able to swear in our newest alderman, Aaron Castello. Won the runoff election. He will be representing Ward 5. And with that, congratulations. And we will go ahead and administer the oath.
I, Aaron Castello, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota. All enemies, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I take this obligation freely, without any metal reservation, or for the purpose of evasion. That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties. Lord by Alderman, the state of South Dakota. Record it to the law, and to the best of my doing. So help me God.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim. I just have a little thing. So they never play the thank yous when the news stations come. They never play it on the news. So I'd like to take this time to thank the constituents of Ward 5, to thank the volunteers on my campaign, and most importantly, my wife, Rebecca, who was unable to be here this evening. I appreciate your support and your confidence, and I'll do my best to represent you and the city well. So, thank you.
Usually, we give a recess for pitchers and stuff, don't we? comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. Does anybody wish to speak to any item not on the agenda? We did not have a speaker request form. Anyone wish to speak to any item, about any item not on the agenda? If not, we will move on. That does take us to the non-public hearing items, items 2 through 82. And the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period for items 2 through 62, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are in the public comment period for items 2 through 62. I do not have any speaker request forms on any items 2 through 62 inclusive. Just want to give everybody opportunities. Seeing none, chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 2 through 62. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period, items 2 through 62. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar, items 2 through 62. And the chair will ask staff if there's any of those items 2 through 62, or the council, any of those items need to be polled. If so, please turn on your light, 2 through 62. Everyone good? Very good. Chair will look for a motion. Whoops, that was strange. I got a blank. Let's go to alderman Bill Okrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, number 37.
Item number 37, thank you. Any other items? If so, please turn on your light. Any other items? Seeing none, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 62, with the exception of item 37. Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 62, with the exception of 37. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item number 37, and we will go to the chair of our legal and finance, alderman Sam Quaker. Could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 37 is request community development to apply for the prescription discount card with CVS Caremark move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Sam, did you have your light on for this item? Okay, very good. Any discussion? Malcolm, I don't, is your light on?
Oh, I'm putting the wrong one.
Let's go to alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a program that I brought back from the National League of Cities. And I did some background checking last week in talking to some pharmacists around town, and there seemed to be no concerns about the program. We received an email message today, and I talked to several pharmacists, independent pharmacists, who have some concerns or would like to talk more about it. I also talked to the South Dakota Pharmacist Association today and their executive director. And there are some things that we probably should look at and some things that we could do just a little differently. So I'm going to ask.
Okay, whose cellphones, then?
That's Bill's tie.
Oh, okay. Ties don't count.
I asked several pharmacists if they would participate with me in a small group to think through this a little bit further and maybe come up with some sort of program that could mirror this program, that wouldn't be a burden on our local independent pharmacists. And they all agreed that they would be willing to do that. So I'm going to ask the council, instead of approving this tonight, I'm going to ask the council to continue it for 60 days, let that ad hoc group have an opportunity to meet, and then come back with a recommendation to the council.
Okay, we have a motion, a substitute motion and a second to continue this to the first council meeting in February.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to musical Bill Okrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly apologize, alderman Chapman. I didn't bump this thing, and it just started playing. I guess, I guess it was trying to show the festive spirit that we have here now that Christmas is coming.
[laughing]
I'm sorry. Anyway, the reason why I wanted to bring this up is, is that it seems to me like this is a great addition to what we can do for the people in our community. You know, we always look for ways to help support the people that need the support. And I know that the journal did a marvelous job of talking about it today in the newspaper. But I was asking, I wanted to ask Malcolm to give a little bit more of a description of what this is and what this is all about, so that the people that are in the audience here will be watching or on TV or getting more information from our media can have a better idea of what this program is all about. Because in my opinion, this is pretty darn special that we have these kinds of things available. So if I can turn this back over to alderman Chapman, and I'll try to keep my tie quiet this time.
Okay, Malcolm, you want to briefly go? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, alderman Okrepke. Yes, the program is a discount program whereby citizens who live within the city limits of Rapid City would then be able to go to participating pharmacies and receive a discount on prescription medication. One, if they don't have insurance, or secondarily, if the insurance they currently carry not cover the medications that they need. Talking to some pharmacists, they just have some concerns about it and would like to just participate in further discussions about it. And I said, absolutely. I think this, bringing ideas like this do a couple of things. One, if we can somehow benefit the citizens of Rapid City, I think that's one of the things that we should be doing. And again, secondarily, if this isn't the program that would work, then it would generate some ideas around pharmacist and the pharmacist association to come up with a better program, maybe. And maybe we can't do any better. But I would just respectfully ask the council to give us that 60-day period of time to further those discussions, and then come back again with either this program, some changes to the program, or maybe nothing at all.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Okrepke, did you have anything else?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. When we're talking about these cards, what kind of savings are we talking about? Did you get any feel from that? Because, I mean, is it like a dollar, or $10, or 2% or 5%? You know, what kind of savings are we talking about for these people? Because according to the email that you were referring to from one of the pharmacists, is that some of these other pharmacists have these same kinds of opportunities, and they also have cards. So, and it's important that everybody realize that some of these things are available. But what kind of savings did the League of Cities suggest to you?
Mr. Chapman?
The, it could be anywhere up to about 20% on average savings for citizens who either have insurance or the insurance that doesn't cover some of the prescription medication when available. So anywhere up to about 20% on average. Again, I, not that I'm hesitant about talking about it, but I think the journal did a great job of covering the story. And I would just ask that we could come back. It's linked to the agenda tonight. But if we could come back in 60 days with just more information about, and now having better input from some of the pharmacists in town who had concerns.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue this to the first council meeting in February. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the non-consent items, items 63 through 82. And the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment for items 63 through 82. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are in the public comment period for items 63 through 82. Just so you know, during the public comment period, we do have a time limit of three minutes, and we do use our lights up here. The green means you have plenty of time. When you get down to the yellow, that's down to 30 seconds. And then during the red, if you could just please wrap up your comments. Thank you. We, first speaker request form is from a Tom, must be, looks like a V, but I think it's a W, Walsh, item 70, 71, 72.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for having us here. I'm here to speak about 70, 71, and 72. My name is Tom Walsh. I'm from Sioux Falls. I drove over just for this meeting because of the importance of it. I am here representing my family. We own the property and also the Days Inn and the Burger Kings out here. We do business out here. We are local. Our partners. Basically, what we're trying to do is just basically divide the properties. We have two different businesses that lay on this property. We have put in place covenants that if a water main or any problems break, we will pay for it. It is not going to be the city's cost, which is a great thing. We've done everything that the council's asked us for agreements. And I simply just ask for your support. We've been working on this for four years. We're so close to getting this thing completed. I just really hate to see this fail right now. And it's very important that we get this done by the end of the year for our business. We want to put the businesses with the property that they own. Right now, it's all grouped together, and it's just, it's very simple. So I ask you, please support us. The other thing to it, if we have to put a water main in, that's going to be very costly for our businesses. We are small businesses. The Days Inn's one hotel operator. Our Burger Kings out here are five stores that we can't afford to spend $20,000. This is money that comes out of our pocket, especially in the economy that we have today. We simply can't afford it, and it'd affect all of our people, from our management team to our team members that are employed by us. So if anyone has any questions when it comes up, I'd be glad to help address them, myself, either, or Janelle. But thank you for having us here, and I hope you support us.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We also have a speaker request form on items 70, 71, and 72 from Kelly Knutson.
Hello, my name is Kelly Knutson, and I'm the general manager of the Days Inn Hotel and the Lounge on Jackson Boulevard. The Days Inn is a single property that stands on its own, meaning that no other hotel, we do not own any other hotel properties. We're not part of a huge corporation of hotels that could help us weather a financial setback by having to do these water adjustments. The employees of the hotel and myself are dependent on the performance of this hotel and lounge for our means of employment. I know that shutting down our entrance from Jackson Boulevard and limiting our parking would have a very negative impact on our business, as would closing the entrance from West Main Street. The Days Inn and Lounge employ around 30 people who can't afford to have their income cut for even a few weeks. We have employees who rely on tips from customers and housekeepers who are paid solely by the amount of rooms they clean. Most of our employees live paycheck to paycheck. Closing an entrance and limiting parking even for a few weeks would certainly have a negative impact for these employees, which could also potentially lead some to leave their employment with us and work somewhere else. This would have a lasting impact on our small operation. We have steadily built a loyal customer base for the hotel as well as for the lounge. I would hate to inconvenience our customers and take a chance that they may go elsewhere and forever lose their business. Both the hotel and lounge business is very reliant on these repeat customers. During these uncertain economic conditions, I respectfully request that you do not impose additional and unnecessary hardships on our business employing customers. Please allow the existing service line to remain, and please approve exception 08EX131. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We also have a speaker request form from Brad Hanson on item 70, 71, and 72. And there again, Mr. Hanson, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
City council, my name is Brad Hanson. I'm an operating partner for Burger Kings here in town in the Black Hills. I'm going to be real brief, because I think you've pretty well heard it. But just keep in mind, for me in particular, our business is based on convenience. And if you are going to close down the main entrance of our Burger King, people will go somewhere else. And if you do it, there's two options for this water main. And the other option would shut down our drive-through, which is 70% of our business and more every day. So to be without that for two weeks or more, depending on how long it takes, would be detrimental to the people that work for me and my family. So I just ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Janelle Fink, item 70, 71, 72. And there again, Janelle, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Do you want to draw on this?
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I'm here on behalf of the Days Inn and Burger King, acting as their agent. We're requesting an exception to allow a non-standard water service line. What we currently have is one lot with two separate businesses, the Days Inn and the Burger King. They intend to separate their interest or divide the lot. There is an existing water service in this area here that comes from Kansas City Street, goes down here, and connects to the Days Inn. We, that would be a non-standard service line under the current requirements. We're asking to allow that service to remain in place. The council has, in the past, established three criteria for granting this particular exception. One of the criteria is that we have to enter into a covenant agreement consenting to an excess project. One of the other requirements is that we have to enter into an agreement that holds the city harmless from all claims. Your attorney's office drafted an agreement that was signed by our landowner and provided to the attorney's office. The first stipulation is that the partnership agrees to the covenants and agrees to consent to an excess project, so we meet that requirement. The second item is that we agree to hold the city harmless from all claims related to a non-standard service line. So we meet that second requirement. The last requirement that was established by the council is not quite as black and white. It says that we have to demonstrate extraordinary circumstances, which might be a little difficult to define. I'd like to offer an example of an ordinary circumstance. Might be if I were a developer and I had a vacant piece of land, I wanted to develop two lots, and it would be more convenient to put both of the service lines in the same location or crossing the same lot. That would be an ordinary circumstance. An extraordinary circumstance is where we already have an existing water line in place that's functioning and serves the Days Inn property. The two options that we have, if you don't grant the exception, are also extraordinary. The first option would be to come from Jackson Boulevard and create a service line that would come all the way in to the domestic service and the fire protection service here. That would be, as the gentleman indicated, it would be a significant expense and inconvenience to bring the service line in through here. It would close the circulation and the entrance to both the lounge and the hotel area. The second option is to upgrade this segment here to an actual water main that would only serve this one property. So it doesn't make much sense to upgrade to a main for a small, isolated segment that would also close down the drive-through that comes out of the Burger King in this area here. So I believe that we unequivocally meet all three of the requirements. We demonstrate extraordinary circumstances.
Janelle, if you could, that is time, if you could.
The first issue is the fear of losing our homes. The problem is that the city has in place, upon annexation, the East Greenway master plan. The implementation of this Greenway plan requires condemnation of property. Although we have been told numerous times that the city has no intentions of condemning our property, the initial stages of this plan reads, and it's right here on that piece of paper, acquire all private developed property within the floodway on the basis of public health and safety and develop into a neighborhood passive park. I'd like to repeat that again. Acquire all private developed property within the floodway on the basis of public health and safety and develop into a neighborhood passive park. This plan would not have been drafted if there was no intentions to ever act on it.
There again, Ellen, if you could just identify yourself for the record and then we'll get you started.
My name is Ellen Rook and I am the president of the South Valley Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
I am speaking today for the majority of the residents of South Valley Drive annexation area. We have clearly expressed that we, the residents of South Valley Drive, do not want to be annexed into the city. Even though the county commissioners have voted down the annexation of the unplanted land, growth management insists on proceeding with the annexation against the wishes of the people. We have four major concerns from the start. Although these issues have been discussed at great length, they still stand today. The first issue is the fear of losing our homes. The problem is that the city has in place, upon annexation, the East Greenway master plan. The implementation of this Greenway plan requires condemnation of property. Although we have been told numerous times that the city has no intentions of condemning our property, the initial stages of this plan reads, and it's right here on that piece of paper, acquire all private developed property within the floodway on the basis of public health and safety and develop into a neighborhood passive park. I'd like to repeat that again. Acquire all private developed property within the floodway on the basis of public health and safety and develop into a neighborhood passive park. This plan would not have been drafted if there was no intentions to ever act on it. This plan and the federal land, or future land use designation of alternate use public will immediately decrease the property value upon annexation. Number two is loss of essential services. We are adequately covered by the county services and we stand nothing to gain by Rapid City Services. 100% of the annexed area lies within the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, thus Sections D and E of the resolution to annex pretty much does not pertain to our area. Street services, the study also reads that for continuity of services for snow plow, plowing, and road repair, South Valley Drive has been excluded from the resolution of And since about half of our remaining roads are not deemed public, Section F has diminished significantly as well. We believe a better solution for continuity of services would be to not annex in this small section of land. This annexation would create several donate holes within the city with a county road running between two very small sections of city land. Hence, the term continuity is way out of context. Our third is two serious safety issues. We have no secondary access and a bridge so low that it would serve as a dam in the event of flooding rains. The annexation would not address either of these safety issues, but we would get a library card. Number four, area of residents living on a fixed income. We are entering a severe recession and many of our residents would not be able to afford the tax increases that the city would pose on us. So in conclusion, we feel that this annexation of the 262.72 acres is not in the best interest of the city and the residents of South Valley Drive. You must all remember that even though you have to hold a compatible relationship with other city departments, you are elected as the voice for the people. We would like it to be known that it is our intentions to take this forced annexation to a city vote if you, as a governing body, choose not to listen to our desire to remain in the county. Has the voice of democracy perished in Rapid City.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form. It's Hugh, I believe it's Barton, item number 73. And there again, if you'd identify yourself for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Hugh Martin. I live on South Valley Drive. I've been there for probably 37 years or more. Approximately 25, 30 years ago, the city was going to take us in down on Valley Drive and Mel Larson, the former governor, former mayor, held an auction to deter this being taken into the city. And he was against it then and I'm still against it. And I was against, and all the former residents in that area was against being taken in back I do have barbed wire offenses, which I understand is against the city rules. I do have horses and I do have semis and different things that's not supposed to be in the city. But anyway, another point I'd like to make is, at one time when they were building, getting ready to build a journey museum, that the inspector told my renters they didn't have to pay the rent because that they were going to condemn my trailer court that's served by the Journey Museum. And I guess the reason was that it was unsanitary because at times the sewer did run out on the ground. But after the city bought the property, and it wasn't that I was against selling it, it was just they was trying to get it at a cheaper price. But anyway, after they took it over, they, I went by there to see what was happening and most all the sewer lines were running out on the ground when I went by the trailer court at that time. So, in my way of looking at it, they were trying to get the renters to move out without them replacing them into a different environment or a different trailer court, so. And I, it's kind of stuck in my craw that I didn't like the way they were doing their business back then and I really don't want to come in the city now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Tracy Beck on item number 73. There again, Tracy, if you could just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Beck and I've only lived in the South Valley Drive area for, well, since October of '07 when I was actually forced to leave the Eastbrook Mobile Home Park, if you remember that, where all of us had to leave. And I just had a question on the last five lines of item 73, where it has the portion of the section line highway known as South Valley Drive lying within 33 feet each side of the north-south line between Section 9 and Section 8 and between northwest quarter of Section 16 and the northeast quarter of Section 17. And it goes, you know, the north, the rest of it. What I need to know is, does this description, it seems to be describing the South Valley Drive area, if so, there seems to be some contradiction with the resolution of annexation. On the resolution, it says to have continuity of services for snow plowing and road repair, South Valley Drive has been excluded from the resolution of annexation. So I guess my main question would be, is that just a contradiction or is there some kind of error?
Tracy, okay, very good. Thank you. And hopefully that'll get addressed as we talk about the topic. Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Pete Schutt, my close, Pete, number 70. He lives at 2675 Apple Hill Lane.
My name is Pete Scott. And, yeah, nobody gets it. You should see the mail we get. Mayor Hanks, I wonder if you would ask for a show of the people in the room, those present here who were against this annexation, to stand?
Yes, you know, this is a public comment period, so it's a little bit inappropriate. I think we can all assume that the majority of folks that are here in the audience are from the South Valley, probably have some opposition, but it's a little bit out of line to do that, but your point is well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? I have no further speaker request forms. I have no further speaker request forms. Seeing none, the chair will look for a motion to close the public period for items 63 through 82, please. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period for items 63 through 82. Any discussion on that motion? In discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to ordinances and legal and finance. Alderman Quaker, if you could start with item number 63, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 63 is first reading of ordinance 5443 to provide for administrative approval of certain business licenses by amending various sections of Title 5 of the municipal code and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 64, please.
Item 64 is first reading of ordinance 5444 to provide for criminal history record checks for certain business licenses by amending various sections of Title 5 of the Rapid City Municipal Code and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to thank Jason Green and Chief Allender for bringing this forward. It's something important to me and the community, I think, to get the background checks on some of the things that we need to have checked and I just appreciate their work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, item number 64. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 65, please.
Item 65 is first reading of ordinance 5455 to establish the process for approval of tax increment financing districts and project plans by adding Chapter 3.2.6 of the municipal code and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 66, please.
Item 66 is first reading of ordinance 5456 regarding a supplemental appropriation number four for 2008 and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 67, please.
Item 67 is first reading of ordinance 5457 updating the fees for water service by amending 13.04 of the municipal code and I yield to the floor.
Thank you, we have a motion for approval. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Robert, is this the point you were going to give a short presentation?
It was, it was, and I could actually do a little presentation. So, too. Explain to them, provide some answers to. And the first one was the discussion about for the single-family, single-family homeowners, moving that first tier from 0 to 10 units to 0 to 12 units, what would the impact be to the rest of the rates for that? And we have analyzed that. By doing that, we would essentially be changing the other three tiers. Tier two, three, and four would go up two cents per unit for each of those tiers. And that would be necessary to make up the income that would be lost through increasing that first tier from 10 units to 12 units. Now, what the financial impact would be to the average single-family homeowner, essentially in 2009, they would see a savings on their monthly water bill of about 35 cents. Each year, it pretty much stays online with that. When you get to the year 2018, we see that there's a difference of about 76 cents. It would be a savings of about 76 cents per month on their water bill. I think I had previously reported $5 at the legal and finance and I apologize, that was incorrect. It is 76 cents per month is what would be saved by going from 10 units to 12 units.
And that's in 2018?
2018, yes.
Okay.
Another question that was asked is, what is the financial impact to the school district? We've estimated their use for the year 2008 at $180,000 by the end of the year for water and we have projected that out for the years 2009 through 213 and those would increase to roughly $490,000 by the year 2013. And the reason for the big increase for the school district is about 63% of their water goes through a sprinkler system, is used for irrigating yards. Very little domestic use, 37% is domestic, which would be washing, flushing toilets, washing hands, and doing cooking, so. On the sewer side, their 2008 estimated bill for their usage would be 73,000. Again, this is the school district. By 2013, that would be about $99,000 a year. Another question that was asked is, what are the existing capacities of our facilities? The wells versus the water treatment plants? In 2005, our max daily usage was 31.8 million gallons per day. Right now, the maximum capacity of all of our existing wells and the galleries is 23.2 million gallons, so there is a shortfall there just with our existing maximum daily use. So the water treatment plants are needed. With the treatment plants, we'll have the ability to provide 44 million gallons per day. So with the wells and with the new treatment plants, we're talking a combined capacity of 67.2 million gallons per day. Again, the existing max daily use is 31.8. And then the final question was the water bill. The question was from the council, what would the average water bill be for the single-family homeowners for the year 2009 all the way to 2013? So I do have some numbers here. $28.20 is what the projected single-family use would be for sewer in 2008 and that goes up to $29.99 in '09. Ultimately, that goes to $37.03 in the year 2013. So roughly about a $9 increase over the five years. And then the other thing, I guess the final thing I wanted to report was the utility discount program. After visiting with the mayor, we tried to address one of the citizen comments that we heard at our public hearings, and that was the person on the fixed income, what relief could they possibly have to try to address their water usage and the increase in the bill cost? And so we modeled this after the state's tax-freeze assessment program. It's very similar. The eligibility requirements are, you must be 65 years of age or older or be disabled as defined by the Social Security Act. You must have a single-member household income of $22,000 and $573. For a multi-member house income, it goes up to $28,217. It also would be opened up to people who rent or who lease their property, which is, that is the only variance from the state tax-freeze assessment program. In that program, they're required to own their house, so we would open it up to those people renting and leasing. Those were the questions I was asked to report back to the city council and I can certainly entertain any other questions or maybe.
Very good. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor on item number 67 is for approval. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to thank Robert and his staff for bringing this forward. I've had many comments and the most comments I've had is that we're looking at the fixed income program and they thought that was just something that the mayor and you had came forward and I've had a lot of comments on how that's going to work and how much it's going to impact a lot of the people in my ward and I appreciate that we do have that program with us and I think you've done a good job on this. We don't always like increases, but we haven't had increases in 16 years. Again, those increases maybe should have came earlier, so they don't have to be as much sometimes, but we got to do this in order to make sure for the future that we have water for Rapid City, so thank you for everything you've done, Robert.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would just like to add my thank you to Robert and his staff and everyone who worked on the issue surrounding the treatment plants, the water task force, as well as the rates. I do have a question about the utility discount program. Do we have any numbers today? I mean, if that mirrors the state's program for property tax freeze, do we have any numbers of those residents who live within Pennington County that are city residents to get some potential projection of, how many people are we talking about discounting for the future, for a year?
Mr. Ellis.
We know that there are 190 people that are eligible based on homeownership. My guess is, opening this up to people who lease or rent, you're going to see that double, perhaps triple. So my guess is, if we can, 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 if So, my guess is you're going to have somewhere in the range of five hundred people within the community, and keep, keep in mind that we do have over twenty, there's twenty thousand water accounts in town, so if you assume that there you've got five hundred people that would qualify, five hundred accounts, that's a pretty good percentage. That'd be around three percent, four percent of our accounts.
Okay. Mr. Chapman, you still have the floor.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I too appreciate the effort put into the program to help those on fixed incomes. I do think that an important clarification needs to be made so that there is not misunderstanding. The program will apply only to people above age sixty-five or who have a disability per social, per social security, so they need to be eligible for social security disability income in order to qualify for this, for this program. And although that's, that's a great step forward, there are a number of other, other people that will, will be hit hard by these rates. I also think it's important to state that there have been a number of increases over the last sixteen years. Rates went up significantly in, in the late nineties and also again in two thousand and four, so I don't want anybody to think that rates haven't gone up at all. In fact, I remember the discussions in two thousand and four, and, and part of the discussion was to, was to assist with, with future plant issues and, and repairs. I also believe that we need to make a more concerted effort to, to find other resources, including the use of, of two thousand and twelve funds to alleviate what will be a severe hit for all of our residents, but particularly those on fixed incomes that do not qualify for the excellent program that's been put together. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to echo on thanking Robert for all the public meetings he's gone to and set forth with the public, and he's done an excellent job. I just also wanted to express that, you know, our fees are set so that they, they cover the cost of running the water fund, and that's it. And we only charge our customers as much as it takes to run the water business, and part of that is the operating budget to, to run the people. The capital is part pays for the upgrades of the enterprise funds, and that's what we're doing. I, I guess I do kind of, got a request that we have an informational meeting coming in January on recycling, and I attended a National League of Cities Going Green in Washington last year, and there are different public works departments that offer conservation kits, rebates for putting in low-flow toilets and so forth, and maybe at that informational, we can get some more information on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important for us to remember that this is basically an enterprise fund, which essentially means the ratepayers are paying for the service, so those people who use the service are paying for the service, and it's always important in a business. And so, essentially, what the city is doing is running a business. And in past remarks, I've commented that sometimes the city is criticized for not running like a business, and in fact, with this effort, we are attempting to run this as a business because we are saying the fees are directly tied to the cost of providing services. And I think it's important for ratepayers to realize that water really is probably the most precious resource of the West, and so every city is looking carefully at how it is they provide quality water now and into the future, because no city can grow and be successful without being aware that water is of utmost essential to everything that goes on in their community. So, as we look at this, I remind everyone that for these modest rates, what you're doing is essentially allowing yourself to pay for the service that is going to take us into the future and make sure that you have good quality water in your home and that the city as a whole has the benefit of quality water for all the kinds of things that a city needs to, to do to be successful and to run efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading. Any further discussion? Seeing no further lights, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Let's, let's do a roll call, just to be on the safe side.
Quaker?
No.
Olson? Kroger? Costello?
Aye.
Hadcock? LaCroy?
Aye.
Martenson? Leifnbach? Okrupke? Chapman?
Aye.
Motion passes on an eight to one vote. Very good. Thank you. We're on to item number sixty-eight, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item sixty-eight is first reading of ordinance fifty-four fifty-eight updating the fees for sewer service by amending Chapter thirteen point oh eight of the municipal code, and I yield to the floor.
Move for approval. Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second for approval of item number sixty-eight, which is first reading of ordinance fifty-four fifty-eight. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson. Do you have any comments on this?
My comments would be pretty much exactly the same as I described water. This too is an enterprise fund. Nothing is worse than the possibility of not having adequate resources to handle your wastewater and your waste materials, so I think it's absolutely essential that, again, we treat this as a business and that the rates are accordingly set according to, to provide service to the, those individuals who pay, who have the service, pay for the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call again real quick, please.
I don't think. Kroger? Costello?
Aye.
Hancock? LaCroy?
Aye.
Martenson? Okrupke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Motion passes on an eight to one vote. Is that correct? Very good. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number sixty-nine, please.
Item sixty-nine is first reading of ordinance fifty-four fifty-nine, ordinance amending seventeen point oh six of the municipal code for rezoning from general ag district to light industrial district located at twenty-six twenty and twenty-six twenty-one, Riordan Court, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the Growth Management Department, thus the legal and finance items, committee items, item number seventy. Mr. Quaker again, please.
Item seventy is uphold the denial of the request from Days Inn and Burger King to allow a non-conforming service line, and I yield to the floor.
Do we have a motion, please? Motion for discussion, please. Karen, did you want to make a motion? Okay, go ahead, please.
I make motion that we uphold the denial.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, and just for clarification, what we're saying is, the approval would be to uphold the denial of the request, so by approving this motion, you're upholding the denial, okay? Everyone clear on that motion? It's a little bit confusing. With that, let's take a couple lights. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Can we have the picture up there again? Robert, do you have the picture, please? Or Dale?
Dale, why don't you go and run it? And Alderwoman Deb Hadcock, you still have the floor, ma'am. Can you get that right to the world? Keep going. Point north this way. Keep going.
That's good.
Okay, that's good. You're making us dizzy.
Just a couple of questions. The, the public main is what size line? Or, I should, I should ask you one thing. The, the line that you're having there now is what size line? The non-conforming. Is it four inch?
Mr. Tech, do we know?
Just DeNell Fink, no?
I believe that the line is a four-inch line from West Kansas City Street onto the property. The, there's a six-inch fire hydrant lead off that four-inch line that goes behind Burger King, to my knowledge, according to records at utility maintenance.
And what size line do we have from our houses or to, usually commercial lines that tap into our public mains?
Commercial lines, depending upon water usage, anywhere from two inch up to six inch.
Okay. I guess that was my point on non-conforming. On this property, it's a four-inch line that's going to a public main. DeNell made a good point on the water main is to serve one property. In this case, these two properties are going to go, what am I trying to say? The properties here with this four-inch line, you guys want to make it into an eight-inch line, if I'm correct, to make it a, go ahead.
That is correct, yes. To, to bring that service line into compliance, it would have to be upgraded to an eight-inch water line.
Okay. And the only people that would serve on this property at any time would only be Days Inn and Burger King.
That is correct.
And with this agreement, Burger King understands that their property at any time can be torn up.
Dale?
To my knowledge, that is correct, yes.
I do believe non-conforming, in some cases, are something that we need to look in and have been in favor of that in the past, of changing those, but in this case, because it is a four-inch line, it goes to a public main, it only serves these two properties. There's going to be a covenants on there, there's going to be easement, if I'm correct. Those are the next two things on the agenda. It seems like it makes common sense on this, on extraordinary, to tear up somebody's properties to cause undue, basically harm, as we say, just to redo this line, sounds like something that, for me, is common sense that we shouldn't be doing, just because, again, when we do people's houses or we have people's houses, those are what, four to six inch, two to six inch lines? This will be serving to only two properties. If we, in the future, were going to add more properties to this, or they were going to try to add more properties to this, I wouldn't be in favor, so my substitute motion is to agree to let them put this line in.
Sir. Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second to overturn the decision of the Legal and Finance Committee and go ahead and approve the request for the non-conforming service line. Everyone clear on that motion? Further discussion? Alderman Hadcock, you have anything else? Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Within the framework of this discussion, it's always been about the non-conforming nature of it. I know that there are other non-conforming situations throughout the community, and we are once again setting some kind of a precedent as to how we are going to handle this in the future. It would appear that the legal nature of this concern, which is that the taxpayers ultimately would be responsible if something happens to this line, it would appear that by the covenant agreement, that has been perhaps taken care of, although I'm, I, I would want to hear from the attorneys that that is their opinion as well. So, that is, that would be a chief concern of mine, and that's the reason why we put this in place, and my ongoing concern will be the many situations in which there will be requests for this, and are we setting a precedent that isn't helpful for the city and the purses of the taxpayers?
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What was the question, Karen? Okay. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the question because there's been some implication that by drafting the agreements, that the city attorney's office actually supports this action. The agreements that have been drafted do the best job that we can of protecting the city from any liability in the future, both for the sewer main that runs underneath the Days Inn motel, and also in the event of an assessed project to correct this non-conforming situation. That's absolutely in accordance with the process that the council has previously enacted. However, I agree with the public works director that the council should not get itself in the practice of allowing these non-conforming situations to continue to occur, especially when you have a plating situation. So, in short, the answer is, yes, the agreements do as much as can be done legally, but the recommendation is to follow the public works recommendation in denial.
Okay. Karen, you still have the floor if you'd like it, ma'am. Okay, very good. Now, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I can certainly support the current motion that's on the floor, and I, I do have a question for our city engineer or our city attorney. You know, I can certainly understand if we were replating a vacant piece of property here, no billings were, existing billings were there, we certainly wouldn't want this to happen, but Dale, my understanding is, the city's concern here is, is somewhere down the line, be it ten years or twenty years, and that water line fails or something like that there, and the question is, is how did this happen and who is responsible? I think that is our major concern, is it not?
Dale?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is, public works main concern is, is what happens in the future. Even if these agreements are in place, certainly, future owners will still come to the city and ask for guidance or assistance in, in upgrading or replacing that line.
Mr. Kroger, you still have the floor, sir.
And I, and I think this covenant agreement and our whole harmless, you know, helps alleviate that problem, and my assumption would be is that when this, when these two properties are replatted, that there's going to have to be a utility easement that's marked on that plat, and my understanding is, when you put a easement through a piece of property, you can basically put the verbiage that you want on that easement, and we could certainly make a requirement that this be shown strictly as a service line easement or whatever it might be, that somewhere down the line, when this, if the situation was ever to arise that, you know, whose water line is this? Is this the city's responsibility or whatever? With the two agreements that we already have and, and a plat that shows that this was a service line utility easement, not a water main easement, it certainly would help clarify who has the responsibility for that, so I guess, I would hope that if this motion is approved, that, you know, it'd also be noted on that plat that this is strictly a service line easement, utility easement, and, and leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill Okrupke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly applaud the, the work of the city staff, and, you know, we set guidelines and expectations for them, and we expect them to follow the rules when they come forward with recommendations and what we should be doing in the future, how we should be conducting, you know, properties and what we, and, and just basically following the rules. It's our job here to take a look at these rules that have been, we've established, that they brought forward, and then put a sanity check, or does it make sense to what we're, to what we're asking these people to do? And in this case here, I think there's room for argument that it would be okay to approve this request. Couple of quick questions, if I may. One is, does the system work now? Is there adequate water pressure and water service for both of these businesses?
Mr. Tech?
But I, I would assume so. Fire chief, I don't know if he would have any input as to whether or not the Days Inn has adequate fire flows. I would assume so.
Okay, so I'm going to make the assumption, and based upon some conversations I had with the engineer, that the system is working properly, and so, to me, why is government getting in their face on something that works? I mean, why should they, why should we ask these people to spend the additional twenty thousand dollars, or if they have to go to Jackson, to Jack, Jackson Boulevard and tear up Jackson Boulevard? I mean, why are we asking these people to do that? It just, to me, it doesn't make sense. The system works, the either, the protections in the future are in place. I would certainly encourage my colleagues to approve this request and, and not make them dick on this added expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our public works director, Robert Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for the record, wanted to, wanted to explain that by resolution, the public works director may permit these non-conforming service lines, and quotes here, if and only if the following conditions are met, and it really comes down to the extraordinary circumstance, and we've documented hundreds and hundreds of these non-conforming water and service lines, and I will say that this situation is very similar to almost all of them, so in my mind, reading and interpreting the, the resolution, I didn't believe that I had the option of approving this because it is so ordinary. It really is that, we have documented hundreds of these, and this is the case that we see over and over again. So, in taking a cue from the city council about the seventy-thirty program that was recently instituted, past councils approved the forty-sixty program- past councils approved the 40-60 program. You know, in my mind, this is, this is a city problem that Rapid City is very unique to have this problem. And, and my goal has been to try to correct these situations that are out there today and not to create new ones. So that was the reasoning behind the denial of the Public Works Department for this exception request.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not support the motion in its current form. I, I think we've gone through this before where years ago, a city council probably set up here, made the decision that it's okay to have sewer, or have lines in like this, and then city councils in the future would deal with the problem. And this council dealt with one of those problems over the last year, and we saw how difficult it was. And some of the reaction from some of the folks in the crowd was, well, the city council years ago should have straightened this out. I can see it now that in the future, someone will sit out here and say, why didn't the city council years ago deal with this issue and straighten it out? I'm going to take my cue from the Public Works Director and not approve non-conforming lines. Not because I don't understand that we are in tough economic times and businesses don't need to be hampered by that, but I think there's some other solutions that we haven't talked about that potentially could solve some of this. The reason that I heard that this is a detriment to the businesses is because it's going to close off parking, it's going to close off access to their business. That could be true. It's going to cost a lot of money. I'm wondering if there's any way that the city could require that the work that be, that's to be done here happens at night, happens at late night. And is there any way that we can put down gravel so that folks could still drive through the drive-through and still get to the parking lots and have access to these two businesses during the day? I think that's a creative way to look at not creating more non-conforming lines, not impacting their business in some negative way. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we can do this as an assessed project, that the applicants can have a decade to pay this money that's needed for this. I, I understand the economic times and I understand it, but I will not support non-conforming lines. Janelle said it the other day at Legal and Finance, that there's precedents for this, and she's absolutely right. This city council, which I'm a part of, we approved one of these recently. It's not important how individuals voted on it, what's important is what the body says. I will stand by what the body says. It seems to me that the body is saying that this is okay to do. Individually, I don't think it's okay to do. If the body says that it's okay, then that's what will be done. I think we haven't explored all of the options to make this a win-win situation for the applicants as well as for the city. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is a substitute motion, and that is to, to actually approve the request for a non-conforming service line. Everyone clear on that motion? Robert, did you have anything else to add quickly?
I guess I did, just real briefly following up on what Alderman Chapman was talking about. There is a creative solution here. And I'll, I'll let the city attorney interrupt me if need be, but we could do an assessed project, which would give 10 years for the property owners to pay back those improvements. And by our calculations, we've looked at that cost of bringing that to a conforming public main, and it would be in the range of 13 to $15,000. And we could put stipulations on the contract that the work be done at night, which wouldn't impact the drive-through, and do that project during a certain time of the year, what would be best for the hotel.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor. Jason, is this germane to the motion on the floor? And I'm asking the city attorney, this is the property going to shake?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, very good. Jason Green, our city attorney.
And it's in response to the creative solution offered by the Public Works Director. I have a question in my mind whether that works as a standalone assessed project, because it's really for the benefit of a private parcel. As part of a larger project, it certainly works. We could certainly investigate that from our office if that was the direction of the council. My inclination is that it may be difficult to get there. The other thing I would add is that although the nighttime work may be good for Burger King, I suspect that it may have a detrimental impact on the motel that's located directly on the site.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is to approve the request from Days Inn and Burger King to allow a non-conforming service line. Further discussion? Let me ask the question procedurally. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Chapman speaks for a second time? If so, please turn on your light. If not, we go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank our city attorney for just shooting down my creativity. I, I'm not going to argue with him, but I think that what I was trying to throw out was an idea that we could wrestle with, and we could turn over, and we could find some other solution, maybe that could be born out of that idea. Not that the idea was perfect, or that it would fit for everyone, but that it was a starting point to continue a discussion of how to do this, because this will not be the last time that we hear this. It seems to me that this will be approved, and if so, I cannot understand why those with non-conforming lines now in the community wouldn't come forward and say that the city should play a part in this, and my non-conforming line should be approved as well. The city, the Public Works Director said that there are a number of these in the community. Well, I think the floodgates will open, and periodically, we will get those in front of this council. And I don't know how we say, as a council, I don't so, I don't know how we say no to them after taking these sorts of actions. Those are my comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll see another question. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderwoman Hadcock speaks for a second time? If you haven't spoken, please turn your light on. Seeing none, Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I appreciate people's comments tonight, and we did have some non-conforming, and we had like 10 residents that were in the non-conforming, and we did change it to 70-30 for under 1970. But we also did an ordinance where we changed it, and these people here have met all those, well, there's three steps to meet, and they've met two out of three, except the extraordinary and define extraordinary for some people. 20,000 might be extraordinary for some people, and other people, 10,000 might be. So we made this ordinance, we changed this ordinance on properties, it was done on a commercial property, if I'm correct, in order to make it so we could have some exceptions when people needed some help. So if we didn't want to do that, then we shouldn't have made that pass. I know some people might not have had that, their vote towards that, but I think exceptions sometimes are needed. It's common sense, and this seems to be one of those ordinances that we did for this type of issue. Is there lots of people that can probably come forward? Not that I would agree with every issue that would come forward. Mr. Chapman would probably argue with me that we'd have to agree with all of them, but I think this is pretty common sense on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go, there again, ask the obvious question. Does anyone that has not spoken wish to speak before Alderman O'Krepke speaks for a second time? So please turn on your light. Seeing none, we'll go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, there's a four inch water line, and what you're going to require these people to do to put in an eight inch water line?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so eight inch. Now, if for some reason, 10, 15, 20 years from now, the line breaks, we can then say, not only do you have to replace it or fix it, I mean, under your dollars, but also when you refix it, you have to put in an eight inch water line. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
Mr. Tech?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I believe it is, yes. It would have to be brought up into conformance at that point, I believe is the way the agreement is structured. Perhaps our city attorney.
Let's go to Jason Green. Just got a light on from Jason Green, our city attorney.
You're going to have an argument in that case. They would have a good argument that the council's prior approval would allow them to replace it in its current location. City would have an equally good argument that you've got to conform at this time. So it's, it's not a slam dunk.
Okay, let's go back to Mr. O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Is there some way we can put that language in? So that if that line does break, then at that point, it has to come into conformance? Can we say that?
Mr. Green, your thoughts?
I think we certainly could add that to the agreement. I don't know that that's what the agreement that's linked actually says, though. So you may need to approve it with that change and then recognize that the applicants may not be willing to sign it. And if they're not, then we'd have to take this matter up again at the next council meeting.
Then, Mr. Mayor, begs two more questions. First of all, is the, would the applicant be okay with that?
Do we have a representative from the, from the applications? Do you understand the question, and can you answer it? Mr. O'Krepke? Again, Mr. O'Krepke, ask your second question if you would, please.
I think they came up to a conclusion, Mayor.
So I assume that it was a yes, okay?
Okay. In that case, I'd like to make a substitute motion, include that, that verbiage.
I, I don't believe that's appropriate.
How well, how?
I think that's one of the, that's one of the agenda items farther down. Jason, would that be correct?
Okay, I'll wait for it then.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go to Marcia, and I think I know where Marcia's probably going to go, that we probably need to approve the other one before we approve this.
Actually, item one of the covenants does specify that it has to, they consent to installing the conforming line. So that's already part of the covenants that Mike Shadda drafted.
Okay, very good. Jason, you got a good system of city attorney there. Okay, Mr. O'Krepke, anything else? Okay, very good. Let's see, Marcia, was there anything else you needed? Go ahead.
If you're going to approve this, I'd suggest that you approve items, the items together, 70, 71, 72, so that they're all acted on at the same time.
Okay, very good. We'll take that up in just a minute. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This action is taking place because of the effort to plat, which means they want to separate this single lot into two lots, which means potentially you could have different owners owning this, these two pieces of property who currently get along very well. My only concern is for the future.
Yep, very good. Jason, do you have one more comment? Okay?
The first line of the, the covenant agreement that addresses the installation of a conforming service line only applies in case of an assessed project. So if there was a break, and they simply wanted to replace it where it was, I think they'd have an argument that they could do that under the current agreement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval of the request from Days Inn and Burger King to allow a non-conforming service line. Any further discussion? Or could we have, my suggestion from the chair is if you're going to approve this, approve all three in one motion. So if somebody wants to make that motion?
Some move.
Okay. We have a second substitute motion and a second to approve items 70, 71, and 72. Everyone clear on that motion? We're taking them as a group. Discussion on that motion, Mr. O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Is this appropriate now to put in that additional verbiage that I was alluding to earlier?
Mr. Green.
To make it when it, when it has, if it fails, then it has to go.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Given that the motion addresses all three items, I think a motion to amend item 73 to include that verbiage would be appropriate at this time.
70, it'd be 72, not 73. Okay, is that a motion to amend? Hang on a second, I got to think about this. We have two, we actually have three motions on the floor. We have the original, we have the substitute, and we have a second substitute motion. Can we go to amendment, or do we need to dispose of?
One amendment.
We go to one amendment, that's correct. Okay. So, Mr. O'Krepke, did you want to add that amendment?
Yes, Mayor, that'd be fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend. Everyone clear on that motion? What that is, that is an amendment to item number 72, which would add the language that they would be required to upgrade with the failing of that line. Jason, help me out with the language here.
Upon any failure, the property owner will be required to install a conforming service line.
Okay, discussion, and we're going to take discussion only on the amendment. Everyone clear on that? We're going to discuss only the amendment. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand and support the theory behind the amendment, but my question is this, from a practical standpoint, if two businesses that depend on, on this line, if you have a, a sudden, a sudden failure or a collapse, it would take time to reroute everything. And you'd have two businesses that would be dead in the water for that time. And so I understand, Alderman O'Krepke, where you're going with this, but I, there needs to be a some sort of a transition process here that if there's a failure, that a, a fix, a quick fix be allowed until the new line can, can, can be installed. I, I think that that would, that would be perhaps a better way to do it.
I think we'd probably do that administratively. Let's go to Robert Ellis. There again, discussion on the amendment only, please.
Absolutely. These situations do come up already, and we do allow the emergency repair on the condition that the ultimate fix would be, would be either not objected to or done privately without any haste. So these do come up quite often.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quaker, I think you got your answer. Very good. Motion on the floor is a motion to amend. Everyone clear on the motion to amend? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are to the sub, second substitute motion as amended. Everyone clear on that? You're testing my rules, my Robert's Rules of Order here. Everyone clear on the motion? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's take a roll call, please.
Kroger? Costello? Hadcock? McCroy?
Aye.
Martinson? O'Krepke? Chapman?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Olson?
Okay, motion passes 72. Very good. And that disposes of items 70, 71, and 72. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. Takes us to item number 73, and Alderman Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 73 is a request by the city of Rapid City to consider an application for the resolution, for a resolution of annexation to South Valley Drive. And I would yield to the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Marcia, Olive and, Olive and Pecan Lane are both unpaved, is that correct?
Excuse me, which streets?
Olive, Olive and Pecan. Believe that most of, most of those two streets are unpaved.
I couldn't answer off the top of my head.
I'm going to operate with that assumption. It's either, it's either all of both of them or parts of both of them are, are unpaved. Are both of those streets part of, are they platted or unplatted?
Marcia?
Karen, you've done some research on which were platted and unplatted.
Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You asked about Olive Lane and Pecan?
Olive and Pecan.
Those two are platted.
They are platted?
Yes.
So the city would assume, the city would assume responsibility for the maintenance and possible paving of those, of those two streets?
They would assume the responsibility for the streets as they are today. The paving would come as, any other paving would come into the city limits.
Would those, would those two streets be added to the CIP process automatically, or is that something that would be brought forward as part of the onboarding process?
Let's go to Marcia or to Robert Ellis.
They would not be added automatically. It would be up to evaluation of the road conditions and the amount of traffic and the like, and any, you know, desires by the council members representing that ward.
I, well, that, that helps answer one of my questions. I'm glad to hear that those two streets are part of the platted, because that means that the city will assume responsibility for those streets. And I, although one of 10, will make, be making the case to pave both of those streets and bring them up to, up to standard. But, but that does raise the issue of, of South Valley Drive, which is, based on the meeting discussion the other day, which is unplatted.
I'm sorry, Sam, was that a question?
Well, is that correct, Marcia, that it's?
Marcia?
It's unplatted.
Large portions of it are unplatted. There are small portions that are platted. As such, the resolution of annexation that has been presented to you as outlined in the staff report does not include Valley Drive. Again, because of the lack of continuity of the plating, it was again, the recommendation that comes forward to just annex the other areas that not include any portion of Valley Drive. That avoids having half of a road in the city limits and half out.
Alderman Quaker, you saw the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my concern is this, is the, the county, and I understand why, the, the county denied the request to, to annex the, the unplatted portions. However, that had the unintended consequence relating to the streets, particularly South Valley Drive. So based on the meeting the other day, the county street superintendent has already approached the city, asking for the city to, to take over the maintenance and the city, asking for the city to take over the maintenance and then ultimate repair and repaving, or whatever would need to be done for South Valley Drive. But there isn't anything formal that allows that to happen. So my concern is, is that we put this area in limbo, even more so than they are now, by annexing this area without having that important question resolved as to who does what.
Marcia?
There's been a number of email conversations with the highway superintendent. Included in those were Jay Alderman from the state's attorney's office, who does the civil work for the county commission. Again, Jay's assessment is the same as the city staff's, and that is, that is the responsibility of the county highway superintendent and the highway department, until such time as the city would voluntarily enter into an agreement with the county commission to take over that responsibility. So, again, it's clearly the responsibility of the county commission and the county highway department to maintain that road unless it is annexed by the city.
Okay. Sam, you start.
One last question, Mayor. What would the, Jason, what would the threshold be for, I mean, this is time sensitive, and I mean, we have to act in a certain amount of time. How much time can, to what, at what point can the council continue this till, if we so choose to do so?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the council has held the required public hearing. So that's what is, what is really time sensitive. Once that hearing is held, the council can act immediately after, two weeks after it, a month after it. You probably don't want to get real far out, because then there becomes a question of whether or not the hearing and the action of the council were on the same matter. But I think you've met the time requirement by holding the hearing.
Okay. Very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Just a couple of questions, Marcia. One was losing our homes because of the Greenway Plan. Can you explain to us why they wouldn't be losing their homes because of the floodway issue, and how the city in this case would take them if they, it doesn't sound like something that we do. I know because of the flood, we ended up doing that through the Greenway of Rapid City now, just because of some of the issues, but maybe if we could address that concern first.
Marcia?
Certainly. This plan was adopted, I believe, in 1999, and at that time, there was interest in looking at what it would take to expand the greenway to the east of Rapid City along the creek to add them amenity to that portion of the community, and also look at ways that it might be possible to purchase land from some of the properties that were negatively impacted by the flood regulations, whether they were in the city or whether they were outside of it. This plan has been in place since, as I indicate, 1999, and I'm unaware of any property that's been acquired by eminent domain, where we condemn property to acquire it for park purposes. I can only think of a few instances where the cities actually acquired parcels through eminent domain, and they were for the extension of a road, or for a bridge where there was a problem contacting the landowner. So, the practice of this council has been to not use eminent domain to acquire parkland. As you mentioned, there was the situation after the seventy-two flood where that did occur. So the practice is such that we do not. I have to be open with everyone, and I did at the public meetings with the folks, that it is a possibility, but that possibility exists today. There's nothing that says the city can only exercise eminent domain within the city limits. If we felt it was in the public purpose for the city purposes, protection of the public, we could exercise that currently and could have been doing that for the last ten years. So, in essence, again, I think the best example is what the council has done to date, and that is not to pursue eminent domain for purchase of the greenway.
And it seems to me that it's not something that I would do. If people were living there, I know, I'm just saying for myself, that that's not something that I would do, is turn it into a park so people couldn't live there anymore unless there was a safety factor, in the sense that there was already a flood that went through, or you knew the flood, a flood came through or something. I mean, it's not, for me, it's not something that I would even think about doing, is taking people out of their homes, just to put some parkland there. Number two was the second access. My brother-in-law does live out in South Valley. I know there was someone that was supposed to build that second access. If I'm correct, he was saying something about that that was supposed to be built from someone already that lived out there?
Marcia?
I'm not, I would not say that somebody was supposed to build it, but just like the Minnesota Street connection that was identified originally, at this locale, the owner of this property, which was the Plum Creek Group, W E L L C at that time, was paid damages by the state of South Dakota for the severing of those access points, both to the east on Minnesota Street, and then where Valley Drive would connect to the north. So damages were paid to property owners as part of the settlement with the Department of Transportation.
So, you're saying with the damages of that, the money was paid for damages, there was no money put in there for the second access for this area?
Marcia?
So these people could get out? Because was there access there before?
There was a temporary access point, like there was on the east side at Minnesota Street in Willow Bend, which this council's discussed extensively. And again, the state paid damages to the landowner for severing that. They did not pay to reconstruct it.
Okay. Thank you. Another question was, Hugh brought up, he has barbed wire fences, horses, semis. How does that affect him at this point?
Marcia?
There's a legally, non-conforming use that upon the date of annexation, is example of the keeping of semi-trailers there has been legally established in the county, and then it comes into the city and is considered a legal non-conforming use. It can continue until it ceases for a period of a year, just like any other non-conformity in the city limits. In terms of the barbed wire fences, again, it will depend on what the ultimate zoning of the property is. As an example, there may be properties that could be identified as general agriculture, and in those zoning districts, the fence, the barbed wire fence could be allowed. There are situations, too, where, again, it may be no longer allowed into the zoning, depends on the specifics of the properties.
So if his property is zoned for general agriculture, or for barbed wire fence, at this point, he would have to change that zoning. We don't change it, right?
Marcia?
The property comes into the city with a no-use designation, and at that time, I believe it's within 120 days, the city council is obligated to act on a zoning designation. So that would be developed in conjunction with the landowners.
I guess that would be my only issue with this, is I want people to have conforming properties and everything, but I also want people's livelihood, in a certain extent, to be protected. I'm in favor of this annexation, but then I'm not, in one sense, if we're going, if it's going to change things once this council brings us in, if anybody plans on changing the designation, which at that point, I would probably have a fight against that, to change people's properties into something different.
Marcia?
I think one of the major concerns that was expressed was on the animal keeping regulations. Pennington County and Rapid City have very similar regulations when it comes to livestock. So if there was, again, livestock that was being kept on the property, and there's distances that are required to be separated from the actual dwelling units, those are county regulations, and as I indicate, many of those are very similar to what's in the city. Again, they'd have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and it'd have to be established that they've legally been established in the county.
Right.
But if, again, we've been available to meet with individuals and address those on a case-by-case basis, and we'd be glad to do that in the future as well.
I appreciate that, Marcia, because cleaning up a property is different than changing a person's livelihood, where they keep a nice property, and they have horses, and they, you know, have a way of life already. That's the only issue I'd have if we're gonna change something. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to correct my response to Alderman Quaker. There is an outer limit that the council has. It's 120 days. So, 120 days from the date of the public hearing, the council has to act on the annexation resolution.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. The barbed wire in his particular case, is that gonna be affected? Will he have to, will there be a problem with the current?
I can't answer that question without investigating the specifics of that individual.
That's fine. And this is probably another tough question, and I'm not sure if this is for Robert Ellis, and I'm not sure if Alderman Quaker addressed this, but what's gonna be the cost to get all these streets into conformity, and is there any preliminary cost to that? And if we do annex them in, we're gonna have to do some sort of upgrading on the streets and those kinds of things. Now what, is there any preliminary cost figures?
Marcia?
Included in the document, the resolution of annexation that you have attached online, that information's been provided by each of the different departments. And again, it identifies in that, that the public streets would be treated the same as other streets in the city. Again, the city does not go in and upgrade existing city gravel roads to a paved section. It would be done on the CIP basis with all other streets, and they would be rated and then prioritized. Again, you've included in that document the annual cost for providing the traffic control, street lighting, roadside mowing, sweeping, snow removal, and the like, is $22,963, based on the reduced area that is included in the resolution of annexation. So, I just direct you to that study that's included, that has all that information provided by the various departments.
Thank you, Mr. O'Krepeki. Serve the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like, I just wanted to have the public share of those kinds of numbers, and what we're really talking about, the cost for the taxpayers here. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
In understanding what, some of those properties, explain to me how grandfathering in would be in the case of these properties.
Marcia?
As an example, if there was a use of a property for a business that had legally been established in the county prior to the adoption of zoning in the county in 1994, and that had continued on at that site, and it comes into the city limits, and perhaps that area was rezoned to residential, just as an example. At that point in time, that becomes a non-conforming use. It was legally established prior to the annexation and zoning. It can continue as it has existed. It cannot be expanded, but it would not be allowed to grow, in essence. So that at some point in time, when it ceased for a period of a year, then it would lose that legal non-conforming status and would no longer be permitted. It's very similar to non-conformings that occur within the city when we change our zoning regulations.
Karen, anything else?
Well, I ask that question only because my home was annexed in, at a period of time, and there were, in fact, cattle running in adjacent, and some of it was still agriculture, but some was actually on property that was in the city limits, and it didn't change, and barbed wire fences continued to be a part of it. And so, it seemed to me that the possibility of the status quo remaining for some period of time probably would be very similar in this particular area as well. And I was just wanting to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ruck, I see your hand, but just so you know, this is during the, we already had the public hearing, the public comment period, and they closed, so I, I'm sorry, I can't, my apologies, as the council has the rules, and so, I understand. Additional questions? Alderman, Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Ma'am, did you have something you need to say about public streets? I guess that'd be my question. Up here, ma'am. Thank you.
There again, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
My name is Ellen Ruck, and I was just wondering, in some of the discussion that they were having, several of the streets out there have been platted, but they're not dedicated as public right-of-ways. And those streets include Scott Street, Cactus Drive, Sherman Drive, Garden Lane, and Section Nine, and East Fairmont Boulevard. That's about 50% of the streets out there that are not deemed as being public, I don't believe, at this time, and therefore, all of the annexation study references just the public streets. You're talking about Pecan and Olive. Those are public streets. Those are platted streets. But I would like to know if they're talking of all of the streets in that annexation area, or if they're just talking about 50% of them, and the other 50% hang in limbo with nothing? That's my question.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marcia?
Thank you, Mayor.
The city takes responsibility only for the public streets. Private streets, just like in the county today, are not the responsibility of the governing body.
And quite honestly, it can't be, because we cannot spend public money on private property under state statute.
Thank you for that clarification. One more thing. Marcia, on the second access, who would pay for the second access for that? If we wanted to put in a second access there?
Well, again, that second access, the likely location for that, where it's been approved, is in the portion that has not been approved for annexation by the county commission, so that would likely remain a county commission responsibility.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to thank you and all your staff, Marcia. You've answered many a question. I think some of the questions that people are asking have been answered, but sometimes it's hard to soak in some of this, and it's not always, sometimes what we think is fair. But I think in the end, when you listen to the answers that Marcia has and her staff, not all the facts are out there for the neighbors and the people that are out there. I think annexing this property is a positive. Unfortunately, the people out there do not think it is, so I appreciate all the staff's hard work. You've done a tremendous job. You've answered the questions well. Growth management, Marcia always does a good job at answering questions, and if you ever have any questions at this point, Marcia's really good at giving you the answers. If not, we are available. I know that doesn't give you, sometimes when you're kind of upset, happy thoughts about calling us, but we don't mind answering questions. You can email us or call us at any time, and we will try to find those answers for you. We work hard at trying to make the citizens of Rapid City, their questions taken care of, and the staff does the same, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Hattcock? McCroy? Martenson? O'Krepeki? Chapman? Olson? Kroger?
Motion passes on an eight-to-one vote, correct? Very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. That takes us to item number seventy-four, please. And Alderman Quaker. Yeah, let's take about a minute here, let everybody clear out.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seventy-four is a resolution establishing 2009 salaries for certain city officers that yield to the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I visit extensively with constituents about this issue, and it seems very important that we have acted responsibly as a council in approving a budget that we think is reasonable, that is judicious in terms of the present economic situation, and I think we did, all our budgeting process reflected that, and I think that these salaries should be included as part of the budget process, and therefore include the 2.5 adjustment for cost of living. And I think it would be almost irresponsible of us not to, in other words, we assume, number one, that the mayor is a working position. He's the CEO of our community. I think it's reasonable that that position be paid reasonably, and I support the 2.5 being included in the salaries, because I think that is, that shows fiscal responsibility on the part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed at the budget hearing, the last night of budget hearings. There was not a decision made in terms of a motion at that time to bring forward this resolution. This resolution came forward later, outside of the budget process, not directed by council to do so. I think that this is, this is out of place. I have, in the past, other council members have said to me, "Sam, you need to try to avoid talking about salary issues and travel issues outside of the budget process, and it really should be talked about inside the budget process." And that is, that is where this should have been discussed, and specifically voted on, if that's what the council wanted to do. The budget is now completed, now outside of the process. The budget is now completed. Now, outside of the process comes this, this resol, this, this resolution. As far as the past increases for council members, there have been significant past increases over the, over the years. The, for example, the hundred-dollar-a-month technology allowance actually comes in our checks as taxable income and that came through last year, a year before. And so that represents, in terms of a increase standpoint, a fairly significant increase. You know, this is, this is a labor, in my view, this is, this is a labor of love for my community to, for me to, to sacrifice my time away from my family and away from my, my job. It's my family that, that suffers the most. And when I first ran, I didn't, I didn't know it paid anything. It didn't, it didn't make, it didn't make a difference. You know, clearly, there is a great deal of time that goes into the work that we do. But I, I think it, it puts us in an awkward position at this point, outside of the budget process, to be asked to vote for, vote for a pay increase. And significant, there have been significant past increases as well. And for that reason, I would ask that we either continue this to the 2010 budget process or not approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Tim, can you tell us how this procedure came to legal and finance, please? Thank you.
Mr. Preston.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. We, in the budget, budget process, there essentially, the budget was approved include funding for a two-and-a-half percent increase for the mayor and the council. We have, we flag a number of things or tag them that pop up. In November, we prepare a resolution every year for the proposed increase, like we've done previous year. And so we just, we did that same and brought it to legal and finance as we've done before.
Did the council make this ordinance a resolution that this happens every year in November? Is that what you?
We prepare one in November for the review of the council.
And why did you start doing that? On who's, just because that's what you do or because the council, that's what the council has done or told you to do in the past?
It, it's because that essentially for any type of increase, there needs to be a resolution and the council needs to take some sort of action on that.
Thank you. I guess that's where I was going to and why it had to come from budget to here and why this has moved to legal and finance to city council. We're talking the total cost of implementing this is five thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars. That's for all ten council members. Council cost of living is three hundred twenty-eight dollars per year, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents per month, which makes the two-point-five. Some of the information, there has been a look back for ten years and every council member for the last ten years has taken the raise. Some have said no, but they've taken the raise every year. We talk about travel, having to be accountable, but we have people, and, and to me, saying no means you don't have to accept the raise. You can give the raise. My hundred dollars technology, I didn't feel I, my husband pays the technology or my cellphone. So what I did is I gave it to a nonprofit organization, my hundred dollars. And what I say is be accountable. If you say no on the raise every year, but you take the raise, you're telling the taxpayers and you're being hypocritical to the taxpayers, to me, if you say no. So I guess my point is if council members today do not want to accept the raise or they want to continue this for reasons that doesn't make sense to me, I don't always believe someone owes me anything. But if I work for what they are giving me or they are letting me accept, I appreciate that. I work very hard. I work very many hours and I appreciate when people, as Sam says, gives us a labor of love. That, that's very appreciative to me. But when they do that and you're saying up here, basically, we shouldn't do it or you're saying no, I'll say again, don't take it. It's not something you have to accept. But if you say that, make sure you follow through. Make sure you don't take the raise. Because you're telling them if you don't need the raise, that you don't have to take it and you don't want it. So I appreciate this being brought forward. I appreciate my council members that have been working hard. They have been accountable for their, for their money and for what they do for this city. And taking this raise is something that they should be proud of, that the citizens of Rapid City, hopefully, the people that I've talked to, which is many in the beauty shop, appreciate it. I did tell them the amount and they appreciated that a mu, a lot, that they were told and how much it was and they told me to announce this of the total as well. But again, be accountable. If you're going to accept the raise, tell people you're going to accept it. If you want to say no, don't take the raise. Thank you.
Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Well, I certainly didn't take this council member position for the money. However, this does represent half my yearly income. So this is a sort of, some importance to me. But I will go, I'll certainly go along with the majority of the council if they chose to not accept the pay raise. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. We also have a speaker. I'm, I'm going to go to Malcolm Chapman, who is not, oh, did you want to speak? Okay. Let me ask a procedural question. Does anybody wish to speak before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If so, turn on your light. Seeing none, we will go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I, it's unfortunate that the, the comments that were made just a minute ago were, were made that, you know, I, I give to charity also. The reality is here is, is that this is a public policy question. And it is not fair for the city council president to go after one council member or another council member relating, relating to this. This is a, this is a public policy question. And the point that I am making here is, is that, that there, that this should have been discussed or wrapped up during the budget process, voted on at that, at that time. Because otherwise, if all we're doing is rubber stamping a resolution that comes automatically out of the budget process, we're right back to where we started a year ago, which ultimately resulted in, in, in a, in a veto. And council, city council members in Rapid City make almost as much as council members in Sioux Falls, which is more than twice our size, more than double state legislators and probably more than ten times school board members. So I do not appreciate a, a, a city council president going after me personally on this. There's no need for that. Public officials, you know, this is a public policy, public policy question. Let's stick to the question at hand and let, and let's vote on it and, and move on. But I, I want to be very clear that this is a, an important public policy question. It should have been addressed during the, during the, the budget and, you know, let's not make things personal. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask a procedural question. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderwoman Deb Hadcock speaks for a second time? If so, turn on your light. If not, we'll go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Sam. But as council president, I guess it's not personal towards you, Sam. It's, sometimes it becomes where someone says no, but the public doesn't know all the information. And I think it's only fair if you're wanting to change policy on something that is as important as this, then change the policy. You just, you just answered your own question. If it's rubber stamped every year and you don't agree with that, change it. Change it. Change that policy. It doesn't have to be rubber stamped. It could have been changed at any time. Am I picking or attacking someone? No. It's just sometimes when you sit up here and you have people say no on everything that's changing policy, but not changing that policy, that public policy question we're talking about, I don't think is an attack. What it becomes is you watch things and you have people complain about stuff sometimes and not just one person. You have to change the policy and I've been saying that. Change the policy if you don't like the way it is. This is one of those public policy questions that we could have changed at any time. So it's not towards, and it's not being not fair, it's, it's a straight-up answer. If you don't want to accept the raise and you want to say no, don't tell the public you don't want a raise. You said no, you shouldn't get it, you shouldn't do it, and then you take it. It just seems kind of different for me. If I have employees and they don't want me to give them money or they don't want me to raise their rent, they come tell me they can't afford it, I, I try to abide by those rules. I try to be fair. Or if someone wants to give me a raise and I tell people I don't want a raise, I don't take it. I make sure people know that if Deb Hadcock says no up here today, not going to take that raise. That's all I'm trying to say. Has nothing to do with one person. Has a lot to do with everybody on the council. Don't take the raise. You don't have to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd McCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, I'm not going to go into what, what I went into on legal finance, but I do just want to express that this is a safeguard by bringing it to the council in form of a resolution. And that's why Mr. Preston just explained it. It pops up, it's, you know, to bring it to the council's attention. Because at budget time, we did go through great discussions over many, many subjects. One including, I call it continued education, you call it travel. We, we went into that. We, we worked hard on everything. And this is, bringing it to the council in a form of a resolution gives us all a chance to see it up front. It's, it's not a rubber stamp. We're all sitting here talking about discussing it. So it, it's not automatic. So with that, that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say is this is a safeguard. And that's, that's it. Thanks.
Motion on the floor is for approval. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. A question that I've got that comes up is, well, first of all, I think it's, I think it's appropriate that, you know, we at least have a cost of living. It just, I mean, there's, that just makes a lot of sense to do that, to, you know, reward ourselves so that we don't have to, you know, take a step back by not taking these kinds of monies. So on the one hand, it makes sense, but then I kind of agree in part with Alderman Quaker where, why didn't we talk about this in the budget cycle? Why didn't, when we'd addressed all the issues to put the budget together, why wasn't this addressed? And why wasn't this approved during the budget hearings and when we approved the budget? If we were going to give ourselves pay raises, why didn't we talk about it in the budget process there? You know, we talk about following processes. We talk about following the rules and those kinds of things. And to me, when we talk about money, we're talking about the budget. That's when this thing should have been talked about. That's when these things should have been addressed. That's when we should have made the decision then. Not after all the budget's been approved, now we're going to come back and say, "Well, let's just give ourselves a raise now." Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I don't understand it right. But again, I think it's a good that we, we have it. The bad thing is, is that we didn't do it properly in, in doing it during the budget cycle when we, when we had the chance and we were obligated to do it then. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I just want to make a clarification. We've had a couple of comments that said that somehow that we did not do something appropriately during the budgetary process. In my mind, that's absolutely, absolutely false. This, we have followed the same procedure since I've been on the council. We did discuss the budgets or the, the wages for both the council and the mayor during the budgetary process. We talked about it at least two or three different times. And I specifically remember being asked the question, "Will this automatically put into place cost of living increases, adjustments for the mayor and the council?" My response was, "No, it will not. It will put in place the money in the budget, but it takes a separate resolution that has to be approved outside the budgetary process." I specifically remember saying that and we talked about it two or three times. I'm a little bit disappointed when people say that somehow we're changing the budgetary process or we did something different this year. I've been on this council, with the exception of Ron Kroger, as long as anybody, and it's the same process we've used every single year. With that, I'm going to go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to echo basically what you said in terms of the process. I think the council has set up a process whereby we put the money into the budget and then by separate resolution, as the mayor just stated, that then comes for our approval. Maybe that process needs to be reworked a little bit, that, that this resolution comes closer after the budget process is done. But I, I think that the process works. We don't have to approve it if we don't want to as a council. Don't approve it. But I, I've heard the language a couple of times up here in terms of pay raises and this is not a pay raise. This is a cost of living adjustment. It's a cost of living adjustment. It's not a pay raise. So if we're going to use the language, I think we should use it appropriately.
Okay, further discussion? Procedurally, I'll ask a question. Does anybody wish to speak before Alderman O'Krepe speaks a second time? If so, turn on your light. Seeing none, let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Thanks for the clarification. The, you know, I must, during the budget cycle, I know we didn't, I don't remember exactly those kinds of words, so I appreciate you correcting that.
Anything else? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
McCroy.
Aye.
Martenson. O'Krepe.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Quaker. Olson.
Aye.
Kroger. Costello.
Motion passes eight to one. Very good. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. Run to item number seventy-five, please.
Item seventy-five is authorization for mayor and finance officer to sign a contract for private development between North Street Fire Station LLC and the city of Rapid City for tax increment district number sixty-nine, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second per approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to, Sam, did you have your light on for this one?
I do.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the applicant for clarifying the information that was presented the other day in committee. There was discussion the other day regarding the developer costs that, as they're called, was included in this district. The reality is, is that the benefit to the taxpayer in terms of the street improvements and the fire station land and fire station building and infrastructure far outweigh the, the developer costs that are being included in the, in the district. My understanding is that the developer costs are limited to the street widening. So with that being said, I support the motion.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppo, opposed? Motion passes. I'm not used to cadence down there. Uh, let's see. We're going to go to the Public Works Committee items, item number seventy-six, and we will go to Alderman Ron Kroger, who's our chair.
Item number seventy-six is to formally accept a warranty deed to the land in the south, well, accept the land located south of the intersection of Country Road and Elkvale Road, a distance of approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty feet of the east side of Elkvale Road. This item was continued from October twentieth and I'm going to make a motion to move this item to, right after item number, discussion after number eighty-one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item seventy-six to immediately follow item number eighty-one. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move that. That takes us to bids. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four items, four bid items this evening. The first one is the Universal Drive Reconstruction Project. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Stanley J. Johnson Concrete, an amount of five-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents.
We have a motion and a second to accept the We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Stanley J. Concrete. I can't quite read it. Five sixty-eight?
Five ninety-eight, six twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next bid item is Ran Road Drainage Channel Repair Improvement Project. We received eleven bids as listed. Staff is recommending we continue this item to the December ninth council meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to which council meeting?
December ninth.
December?
Oops, it must be December eighth. No, December fifteenth.
I was going to say.
You wanted Public Works, Robert, or to the? Okay, I'm sorry. To the December ninth Public Works. I apologize.
Okay, you were confusing me there for just a minute. Okay, so the motion on the floor is continue this to the December ninth Public Works meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number three is a streetlight pole breakaway coupling replacement. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Conrad's Big C Electric Incorporated in an amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Conrad's Big C Electric for thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number four is a meter transceiver unit, MXU, for Water Division. We received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from HD Supply Water Works, which is a hundred and ten dollars per unit, max three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Staff would also ask that you include in the motion authorized staff to approve same price for twenty, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, if the price remains the same and both parties agree.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for Jason Green here. Mr. Preston, can you repeat the motion? I'm, I'm a little bit curious if we're allowed to.
Okay, staff is authori- or, staff is authorizing that in the motion, they include authorized staff to approve the same supplier at the same price for two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, as if both parties agree to that.
That's not appropriate.
Okay. I didn't think so. Nice try, though.
We're just asking for two thou- or for the current time.
Uh, I think, I think we're trying to appropriate outside the current year. Can't do that. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to accept the bid from HD Supply Water Works for a price of a hundred and ten dollars per unit for a total price of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Move approval. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
The advertising authority for this is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. How does this, how do these two things fit together?
Okay, Mr. Preston.
Okay, the question was?
The advertising authority, as you see right up on the sheet, is three twenty-four, and what we're awarding for a bid is three thirty. So we're actually awarding a bid above the advertising authority.
Right. Mr. Ellis.
Let's go to Mr. Ellis, Public Works Director.
Our estimate was that this price would come in under that three twenty-four. Obviously, you can see it was six thousand dollars over that advertising authority. We do have room within our budget to purchase these items. It did go over the advertising authority, which is unfortunate, but it was competitively good.
Okay, I'm going to turn to Jason Green, our city attorney. If the council so chooses, can they go ahead and award this even though it's above the? I believe we can.
Yes, the, the advertising authority is something that the, that we do locally. It's not a requirement of the bid procedure. It gives the council an idea of how much money we're anticipating spending at the time the advertising authority is approved. So that, that is not a bar to awarding this, this bid.
Okay. Karen, anything else? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. It, the bid says a hundred and ten dollars per unit, and I think I heard Mr. Preston say up to three hundred and thirty thousand. Would there be a problem with saying up to the estimate? Or are that many more units needed?
How did you, uh, Mr. Ellis, how did you go out for proposals? Was it a specific number of units?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure on that. It was bid by the unit up to a certain maximum amount, and that was the three hundred and thirty. I would suspect, I don't have the contract in front of me, but it did ask for a cap. It wasn't an open-ended contract.
Okay. Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have nothing under Mayor's items. We are on to item number eighty-one, and this is a report on the soccer task force update from Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our soccer task force, which was approved a couple of council meetings ago, the direction from the council was that the task force would work with soccer Rapid City. So our first meeting was spent trying to define the scope of what that meant to work with soccer Rapid City. We had three items on our agenda that first meeting to review, first of all, to review the, the original twenty-twelve application for soccer. The second was to determine the scope of the work and what that meant to work with soccer Rapid City, and then something that was pretty open-ended, just other. And we went through that twenty-twelve application, and that then led us to a lot of discussion about this whole determining the scope and other. We came up with seven different items that the committee would like to discuss. The first one being land, not just specifically the land that we're going to talk about after this item, but land in general. There were committee members who wanted to see minutes and notes from site selections that were done previously in terms of what got us to the land out at Elkvale. The second one dealt with fundraising, and specifically the fundraising efforts of the soccer community as it relates to the overall budget for the program. The third one was the funding from the city and talking about that three point eight million dollars, and how that could be transferred to soccer, or is it appropriate to do now? The fourth one was the overall scope of the project. Should this project be phased in? Are there some things that they didn't want or didn't need in this process now that they're trying to phase out of the overall process to reduce that price from twelve million dollars? So that would be a big discussion item. Our engineering department had concerns over the infrastructure needs to any property, not just the property that, that we're going to discuss next, but any property and what those needs would look like. And then an overall plan from soccer Rapid City to facilitate the use of the twenty-twelve funds. And then there was a great push to see the financials of all of the soccer entities that come together to make up soccer Rapid City. Just by the laundry list that we've created, we spent the entire meeting just talking about the scope of the project. We have not delved into any of these issues at all. It was just, it, it wasn't from a lack of trying by committee members to lobby for whatever position they wanted, and I kept them at ease to say, nope, we're not going to do that yet. We have scheduled to meet every other Friday at seven o'clock. I will continue to move the meeting earlier and earlier until we get our work done. So, you know, pretty soon we could be meeting at four o'clock in the morning. So I think the committee is going to do its work quickly. We, our next meeting is this Friday, the fifth of December, and we will start with this list of items to, to go through, and we will have something of substance for the council at, at that time. Today, there's nothing of substance other than the scope of the work that we created thus far. It, it would be remiss of this committee or me to say that the committee said we should approve the land, or we should approve anything at this point because we haven't gotten that far yet. That's my report.
Very good. No action is required. This was an update. Any discussion? Yes. Go ahead.
One of the questions that I threw out at the committee, just looking around, was who, who's not in the room that should be in the room? Who do we need to help us make a decision about how this process moves forward? And two names came up. One was our Parks and Rec. We needed someone from Parks and Rec, so Jerry Cole's name came up. And then a young lady by the name of Cassandra Messner, who the soccer folks are, then, I, I know the committee was formed by the council, so those two names came forward. I guess I'm asking at this time if the council would approve adding those to the, to the committee, or should we just have them show up and participate in that fashion?
Malcolm, I think the appropriate thing is if you want to go ahead and give me the information, I'll bring you through the process. Since we actually ran it through the process as far as legal and finance of actually getting those appointments approved, let's follow that cycle. Just give me the information, I'll bring the names forward.
Yeah, make up. Mr. Mayor, I will, I will submit those names to you via email, but the committee will continue to meet it regardless if those.
And it's a, it's an open public meeting, so they're, the two folks' names you're going to bring forward are certainly welcome to attend and participate. Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Malcolm, for putting in the time on this committee, you and Mr. Wyffenbach. Mr. Wyffenbach did have me, or want me to tell people that he was missing tonight because we're in California because his brother-in-law is very sick. So, um, again, thank you for putting in the time. I know these committees are, are very important, and they come up with good solutions. So thank you very much, Malcolm, for heading that committee in, in bringing this forward.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to, we need.
Just a quick comment.
Okay, let's go back to Alderman. Let's ask procedural questions. I may want to talk before Alderman Chapman speaks for a second time. If not, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I promise my comments will be brief. I just wanted to add that there's, there's a third council member on that committee, and it's Alderman O'Krepeki.
Oh, very good.
Sorry, Mr. O'Krepeki.
Okay, that takes us to item number seventy-six, and Mr. Kroger, can you read that one back in?
Item number seventy-six is to formally accept a warranty deed to land located south at the intersection of Country Road and Elkvale Road, a distance of approximately eight hundred and fifty feet on the east side of Elkvale Road. I'm going to move to continue this item to our first meeting, council meeting in February.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to continue this item to the first council meeting in February. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the Vision Twenty-Twelve update. Mr. Ellis, do you, what do you have for us?
Just very briefly, I have two projects to give updates on. The first is the Canyon Lake Restoration Permanent Bypass and Sediment and Weed Removal Project. Camp Fish and Park opened bids last week. They will be awarding a project to Site Works for six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Their twenty-twelve funding was four hundred thousand. That will only be for the bypass work. And then, uh.
That's for, and that's quite a bit, that's less than what we thought, wasn't it?
Yes, it is.
Quite a bit.
The estimate was a million, so it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Very good.
Short of the, the estimate. The other project I had to report on was the Civic Center Expansion. There was a change order that was approved on November seventeenth. That has been added. Leaves a contingency balance of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two, and I've heard Prime Miliski say it'll be on time and on budget.
Wonder where you got that? I think the change order's for thirty-three thousand, if I'm not mistaken. I think I'm close. Somewhere in the mid.
Yes, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay, very good. Any questions and comments? If not, look for a motion to acknowledge your report, please. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the public hearing items, items eighty-three through two thirty-four. And the chair would look for a motion to open the public hearing for comments on items eighty-three through two thirty-four, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. We do need to leave the public hearing open at this time. So at this, at this point, I'll ask staff if we want any of the items to be removed from the consent calendar, which is items eighty-three through one oh seven. I see number eighty-nine. Okay. Oh, we'll go back to that. Okay. Okay, any additional? Just eighty-nine's the only one, Marsha? Okay. Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items eighty-three through one oh seven, with the exception of number eighty-nine, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of the continued, continued public hearing consent items, items eighty-three through one, one oh seven inclusive, with the exception of eighty-nine. Seeing no further lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighty-nine, please. Mr. Kroger, could you please read that in?
Number eighty-nine is requested by Lyle Bromwich for a preliminary platte located south of Hossian Street, north of Williams Street, and west of Platteville Lane. I would move approval with stipulations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval stipulations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That is the end of our consent hearing, public consent items. Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing items for items eighty-three through two thirty-four, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on closing the public hearing on items eighty-three through two thirty-four? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. My apologies, the chair forgot to take up item number eighty-one A, which was an information item, unless there's any objection. I'm going to go to, back to eighty-one A, which was a discussion on downtown and also Halle Park, I believe. And we'll go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'm just wanting to announce that we are going to light the downtown tree. That was, Security First sponsored that tree. The downtown for the holidays is from Destination Rapid City. It invites you to the lighting of the community tree Tuesday, December second, at five o'clock. It'll be on the corner of Sixth and St. Joe. Its downtown businesses invite you to enjoy Caroline Hot Cocoa and Cider. Join Santa, Mayor Hanks, and Rush, I'm going to say, be nice to him, and Rush Hockey with the Nugget mascot as the light of the community Christmas tree. The Downtown Combined Church Choir will present a holiday concert. That'll be pretty exciting, following the tree lighting. Meet Santa for the kids, his helpers, and the Rush at the Hotel Alex Johnson for cookies, pictures, and autographs. And the stores will be open till seven o'clock. So we invite you all to come down. Hopefully, the media gets that out, and it should be pretty exciting. Sounds like it's going to be a big event, and that's one of the big events for Destination Rapid City, or one of the events that they're putting on this year that we appreciate. Again, Security First, and again, Halle Park. I did forget to mention three guys that were very instrumental in helping me and, and the, the, um, sorry, I'm having a blank right now. The volunteers that helped down there, there's thirty volunteers. Again, Mayor Hanks was there, we appreciate him. Jerry Newberg, he's our electrician for this city. He's awesome. He takes care of our electricity everywhere. He's there when you need him, he's a good guy. John West, he's our traffic engineer. He helps with the star for, on top of, um, the hill. Dale Teck, he's the city engineer, awesome guy, has done a lot for the city, and also was very instrumental in helping us get that done. Again, that was no taxpayer dollars, that was all raised money, and we appreciate, appreciate the Parks Department as well, they're awesome. Always giving a lot of time and effort into that, and we appreciate their help as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, Halle Park looks very nice, and I've received, I think, four or five compliments already. I think you just missed a day or two, so people are very pleased with that. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work on that, Deb. Okay, we are on to the consent public hearing items. This is items one oh eight through two seventeen. One oh eight through two seventeen. And the chair would ask if any items on the consent public hearing items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. Item one oh eight through two seventeen, if so, turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't need to pull any, I just wanted to make the comment. There's one sixty-two and two fifteen are LaCroix Enterprises, and I just wanted to state that they're not related.
Okay, not related, very good. Any others that need to be pulled, items 108 through 217? If not, chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 108 through 217, please. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items. This is items 218 through 234, and we are on item 218, and Mr. Kroger, if you could read that in for us, please.
Item number 218 is requested by the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to incorporate the City of Rapid City's Regional Airport Master Plan update of May 2008. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 219, please.
Item number 219 is requested by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for amendment to the comprehensive plan adopting the Sheridan Lake Road Neighborhood Area Future Land Use Plan. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 220, please.
Item number 220 is requested by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to revise the major street plan by eliminating, adding, and realigning arterial and collective streets to the Sheridan Lake Road Neighborhood Area. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 221, please.
221 is a request by FMG Incorporated for Northwestern Engineering to consider an application for amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to revise the major street plan, more generally described as being located east and west of Sturgis Road and north of West Chicago Street. I would move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussions? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 222, please.
222 is requested by Britton Engineering and Land Survey for Stephen Winyer for Windguard Investments in the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the comprehensive, adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from commercial to light, to industrial, located at 1410 Center Street. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 223, please.
Item number 223 is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Jay Schmeyer, Schmeyer for Mandalay Homes for a major amendment to the planned residential development located at 6446 Cog Hill Lane. I would move to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny without prejudice to the applicant's request. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 224, please.
224 is to authorize the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb, gutter, street, light conduit, sidewalk, water, sewer, and pavement along Samus Trail located at 1445 Samus Trail. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item 225, please.
225 is requested by Craig and Tamara Metstead for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, sewer, and pavement along Samus Trail and Section Line Highway as per Chapter 16.6 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at 1445 Samus Trail. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 226, please.
226 is requested by Cadmus Lee Jackson for Speedway Enterprises LLC for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, sewer, and additional pavement as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at the northeast corner of the intersection of East South Dakota Highway 44 and Jolly Lane. I would move to deny without prejudice.
We have a motion and a second to deny without prejudice. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 227, please.
227 is to authorize the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of sewer along eastern 37 feet of Lot 9, Block 4 of H&amp;H State Subdivision. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 228, please.
228 is requested by Jerry Winland for Lyle Bromrich for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install sewer along a portion of the Hossi Industries Street as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located northeast of the intersection of Hossi Industries Street and Williams Street and west of Platteville Lane. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing no further lights, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 229, please.
229 is requested by Matt Benny for Angie Carlson for a variance to subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water and sewer along Cliff Drive, and to reduce pavement width from 27 feet to 20 feet and 18 feet along Cliff Drive. To waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, sewer along 30-foot wide private roadway easement, to reduce the pavement width from 20 feet to 12 feet along the 30-foot wide private roadway easement, and to reduce the width of the private roadway easement from 45 foot to 30 foot. To waive the requirement to install curb, install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, and water and sewer along the 40-foot wide easement and utility easement, and to reduce the width of the access and utility easement from 45 feet to 40 feet as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at 4560 Cliff Drive. After all that, I will move to deny without prejudice.
I'm not sure we heard all that. Could you please repeat that? Okay, a motion on the floor is to deny without prejudice. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 230, please.
230 is authorized the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, and sewer along the Section Line Highway north, 44th Street, Meadowwood Drive, and existing 40-foot wide right-of-way as a abut to tract A Lot K and Lot 1 located at the northern terminus of North 44th Street between City Springs Road and Sturgis Road. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 231, please.
231 is requested by FMG Incorporated for Northwestern Engineering for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to dedicate right-of-way, to waive the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, and sewer along the Section Line Highway, to reduce the right-of-way width from 100 feet to 80 feet, and to waive the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, sewer, and water along North 44th Street, to waive the requirement to install the pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, sewer, and water along Meadowwood Drive, and to reduce the right-of-way width from 59 feet to 40 feet. To waive the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, sewer, and water along existing 40-foot wide right-of-way as it abuts to the east lot line of the property, and to waive the requirement that is unusable, reserved strip to be prohibited as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at the northern terminus of North 44th Street between City Springs Road and Sturgis Road. I would move to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of part and approve with stipulations in part in accordance with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of part in approval in part with stipulations per the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 223, and Alderman Sam Quaker, legal and finance. 232, I'm sorry. First reading of an ordinance.
Item 232 is second reading of ordinance 5452, an ordinance amending 17.06 of the Municipal Code for rezoning from general commercial to light industrial located at 1410 Center Street. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 233, please.
233 is second reading of ordinance 5453, amending Section 17.06 of the Municipal Code for rezoning from Park Forest District to flood hazard district located west of Chapel Lane and south of Jackson Boulevard, and move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, I was waiting for an aye there. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. 234.
234 is second reading of ordinance 5454, an ordinance amending 17.06 of the Municipal Code for rezoning from no-use district to general ag district located at 1445 Samus Trail, and move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. The bill list that the council has totals $10,21,881.94. There are no additions or changes.
Do we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list as published. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion?